Yeah, mine's lit.
Got it. I'd like to call to order the city council's special meeting Tuesday, August 16th. Please rise for the... Fledgled lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Schuck.
Yes, sir. Mayor Dale Massid.
Here.
Vice Mayor Terrence Rowe.
Here.
Councilwoman Nancy Britton.
Here.
Councilwoman Jenny Sorrell.
Here.
Councilman William Ditmer.
Here.
And interim city manager Jim Mathieu.
Here.
Okay, we don't have staff, we don't have announcements. General public. I have... George Vera. Oh, no, you're under selection. Anyone from the public want to speak? Ms. Gray, welcome back. Okay, we're up to council. Any comments, thoughts? Good? Nancy?
We're gonna... We're here for candidates' selection for the new city manager.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Brian Houlihan. Taking a motion to nominate him.
I think that would go when we get to the agenda item.
Well, that's why I just asked you.
Well, we're under comments. Any comments? Okay, council business. Ms. Britton.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to nominate Brian Houlihan for our next city council.
Okay, do I have a second? No seconds. Okay, let's go on to some discussion. Anyone want to speak to this issue, to why, who, and where?
Do you want to go out to the public first?
We can go to the public, let's do that. I don't see... Oh, yes, I do. George Vera.
Mr. Vera, are you ready? Please make sure you give your name and your address.
George Vera, 7810 Chapel Avenue. I would like to listen to the public first, if it's possible.
Well, you are the public.
Yeah, well, I'd like to listen to their ideas.
Okay, but you might as well give your ideas while you're here, huh? You don't get two swats at them.
Well, my ideas are about the kids with the 14 and 18-year-old drug situation. I'm against it 100 percent.
Well, I think no one disagrees with that. Any other thoughts, sir?
Not really. I want to listen to the public.
Okay, they're coming. Thank you very much. Oh, Lori, haven't seen you in so long. Please. I'm sorry?
Is it my turn?
Your turn.
Lori Simpson, 5006 Sunset Boulevard. I've been a citizen here for 22 years. And I don't know if Jerry Calhoun applied, but you should seriously consider him because he's the best city manager we've ever had, in my opinion. He's integrity and professionalism.
He did not.
We should go beg him to come. I do have concerns about Mr. Lupo. I credit him with the CRA thing, but I do have some serious concerns that I don't want to say publicly, but I really do. And this came from city employees that worked here before, so...
Okay. We have Lori's gone. Jim Priest.
Jim Priest, 5100 Sunset Boulevard. The only reason they brought me here, our city manager, obviously, he runs our government, okay? There's no question about it. He's the day-to-day operator, et cetera. And I entrusted our council, okay, obviously, to do the right thing here. And I wouldn't probably ever have come up to speak to this issue if it hadn't been for the name of Vince Lupo coming up. That gentleman, okay, oversaw this city under its darkest days. We were under different investigations, indictments, you name it. It all happened under his watch, every bit of it. He spent money like there was no tomorrow in there. We spent $350,000 for a set of plans, and we didn't even own the property to put a parking garage on. It was ridiculous what this city went through during that man's guidance. I simply cannot fathom why we would look to go down that road again. The star that broke the camel's back from last... When he finally got fired, okay, was he... The building department had run into 10 kinds of problems every time he turned around. We were being investigated by all different forms of government, the state, county, et cetera. And we couldn't keep a building official. Last one, the one that happened right under his last tenure in here, the gentleman was for four days. Qualified, came from Temple Terrace, I believe it was, in there. And got here, and he just could not deal with what had been going on, and walked off the job. He turned around at that time, we had a lady that was our code enforcement official, and he put her in the position, and the question that came up was, was she really qualified, okay, for it? And he wrote a letter, it's matter of public record, he wrote a letter to the council sitting at that time, that he himself had personally vetted her licensing, and that she was fully qualified to sit here and do that and take that job, okay? When then, our sitting mayor on there looked into it themselves, and they found that this woman was barely qualified, okay, to act as a code enforcement officer. So he turned around and directly lied to the people he works for in here. I cannot imagine, dream of the idea of having that individual ever come back to our town again.
Thank you. I have Sandy Spaldy.
Can you call me last?
I think we already had two of those. Okay, Phil?
I'm sorry, everybody, I had a...
Franco, 5021 Morderside Drive. Mr. Priest must be reading the St. Pete Times, because most of what's being said, the real argument between somebody, I'll never forget going to a party, and our St. Pete Times editor said, "I love Port Ritchie. Those effing whatever are so dumb. I sell papers. Nobody in this state knows how small they are, yet they keep effing up, and I print it. It looks like it's a major city, and it's not. It just kept going on and on and on and on." Next issue, I think it was the most prosperous time this city has ever had. We had a water department that cranked out money like it was a cash register. CRA funds, I will never forget the last meeting I attended in council, when the new mayor, Ms. Taylor, said, "We're gonna do something about the CRA funds. Only the rich people are getting it. So we'll do away with the citizens' council, and now our staff and our council will be that." Anyway, we've got a freight train heading at us, and I don't know how many people know it, I've sent several people. And that's called flood insurance. The majority of our people in this town need flood insurance. If you're on the ground, you're really in trouble. Mr. Lupo was personally responsible for handling in 1996, when he came here, of cleaning up this mess of a flood insurance that we had here. He's responsible for getting the 16 percent discount that we now have, because he knew his way through government. And he's also responsible for which the later man, mayor, took credit for, for getting the funds to rebuild 23 houses. It was either an outright grant, or it was a loan. And the loan was 1 and 1/2 percent, 2 percent, 40-year, assumable, and they bought your own mortgage. We're gonna need him again, because as of April 1st, the clock has started again. You'll expect a 9 percent increase to a 20 percent increase in your flood insurance till it reaches parity. Parity is going to be approximately four to five times what you're paying now. You'll never be able to sell your home if we don't get the grant money to raise these houses. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Oh, you came back.
I just wanted for a drink of water.
Sandy Spaldy, 8207 Hope Post Road. I need a little extra time. I asked Tammy to give you all a letter. This letter is from Margaret Stafford, who worked in the city for 18 years. I'll read it out so everyone can hear it. This is a letter from a former employee of the city. My name is Margaret Stafford, and I'm writing this letter as a recommendation for the position of city manager for Vincent Lupo. Mr. Lupo was the city manager for the city in the past. He was competent... He was a competent person who worked hard for the city to receive grants for different things that helped keep the taxes down. He also treated his employees very good, and treated his employees with the respect they deserved. I worked for the city for 18 years, and worked for four city managers, and Mr. Lupo was excellent at his job. Okay, now it's my turn. I don't want to repeat it... Oh, my name again? Oh, thank you. I don't want to repeat everything that Mr. Franco said. Was Vince perfect? No. Wasn't perfect, none of us are. Did he make mistakes? Yes. But they were minor mistakes. He took the city at one of the worst times and brought it up to par. He was good to his employees, because we, remember this, were the... Our employees were the lowest-paid employees, that he checked all the cities similar to our size and brought them up to par. Did he give raises to the supervisors? No, because they weren't underpaid. To me, that's very fair man. You hear me say, "Grants, grants, grants"? He made sure we had some. CIA? He... It's the RA, I'm sorry, CIA. Well, we need to be investigated sometimes, I think. Anyway, I'm on a better draw high, too, people, so what could I tell you? Anyway, he did many, many good things for the city. And maybe he did a few that were not perfect, so what? Who... You know, who is perfect? I don't know, except for God. Listen to me carefully. Our flood insurance is going up, our house insurance is going up. You already said we could raise taxes to a certain point. I think we need this man, and I'm very happy that he's willing to come back. I really think you have a shot. What's the worst scenario? You let him go. But at least you know what you're getting. The others, you don't know what you're getting. He knows every part of the city. Some know one thing, some know another thing. He knows it all. And I'm gonna leave you with that. I hope you really make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? I'll bring it back to council. Well, I guess I'll start. I respect Mr. Priest, I'm sure he's maybe somewhere on... The $350,000 that supposedly we spent was... I do not know that that happened. We had a $400,000 grant for a parking garage. Mr. Lupo, when he was fired, in my opinion, for no reason, offered to stay on and keep things together. So we lose 400. We didn't pay anything, because we never did the grant. No building official. How long has it been, Jim, since we had one here?
I think you probably answer better.
October.
Octo... Full-time building official?
Full-time, on-staff building official, October.
October, okay. And before that? Well, I mean, my point being, we can't get a full-time building official. I'm praying we can. At any rate, after that said, these candidates are excellent. They're excellent. I have no problem with any one of them whatsoever. The only problem I think we're facing is knowing the culture here, knowing the... Having contacts in the county, having contacts in Hillsborough, and hitting the ground running. With Jim's help, of course, but he's already done this job. He's done it in a long time. He put the CRA fund in. We got our dredge grants, and there's about 10 million missing, and I can't find anything that was done with it. So he did put that in. He and I were together when we found that out. Here's ears perked up. I didn't get it, but he got it, and we were the last one in the entire state that ever blighted an entire city. So we're running on government money right now, and we're just starting to pull out of that and do what we were... We meant to do with it in an original time. Mr. Lupo put that in. He is a friend of mine, so I'm, you know, somewhat prejudiced, but, again, I wouldn't have any of these guys for city manager, except for the fact that we aren't in a place where we can teach people, and they get to learn and make contacts, and this and that. I think he's the only guy... He's the only one I'm gonna vote for, and it's not because he's a friend, it's because he can hit the ground running, knows the employee... Knows a lot of the employees. And that's all. Turn it over to anyone else.
Looks like you're looking at me. Okay. I agree. All three candidates were very, very good. And the decision that I came to was without bias of any sort. I made the statement at the workshop that this is, I believe, probably the most important decision we can make up here. We make the policy, we put our city into the hands of the city manager. We put all our trust and a lot of power into that person's hands. I have looked at this, and I have analyzed the applicants. I have analyzed everything they had. I have looked at it from a logical standpoint as well. And I looked at what each candidate would bring to the city. I can feel comfortable in that I have completely vetted these candidates. And I have just a couple reasons why I had to make the choice I did. First of all, the reason that I couldn't... Mr. Julian had admitted to us during his interview that he doesn't have any background in utilities, public works. We're hoping, and praying, that that is one place that we can really turn into a jewel. It's our enterprise fund. It is where we can make money. It is where we can take the burden off of the CRA, one place. And Mr. Cooley Kendall, I like him. I liked him a lot. I think we all did. He had background in utilities, a lot of it, grew up in it. Wow, I was impressed. I'm still impressed. However, when I asked him about CRA, he had no idea what I was talking about, no background in CRA. That's the 800-pound elephant in the room, that CRA problem that we've got. I need somebody that can jump up, somebody that knows it, somebody that knows the rules, somebody that knows the law, somebody that knows CRA inward, backward. So with that, I'm left with one candidate, Mr. Lupo. Now, I went, and I looked, and I dug, and I read the articles, and I talked to people, I talked to the citizens, I talked to the employees, I talked to past employees, I've talked to present employees, anyone and everyone I could get that knew anything or had any contact with him. Then I went through all these problems that the paper brought up. Well, it's kind of funny, because most of those problems were really problems at all, and most of them were brought before this council. So I'm not gonna get into all that right now. The paper did give him credit for bringing a Walmart, although they didn't like doing it, they mentioned it. Improving the parks, extension of Grand Boulevard, new city hall, fire station. There are things that he brought to this city that I see as a very positive influence. He had made some mistakes. He made one that cost him his job. Did he learn by it? I'm sure he has. He took a subordinate's word for something and took it with... The point... To the point that he put his reputation on it, and it cost him his job. I can't think of anybody who would have learned a better lesson by anything like that. So with that, I'm gonna make the motion.
I'm not... Mr. Rowe has...
I'm just raising my hand, and I'd like to speak.
Mr. Rowe has four.
I will make the motion that we appoint Mr. Vincent... Our Lupo as our new city manager.
I'll second it.
I've got a motion and a second. Okay, any other discussion? Ms. Nancy?
Yes. I have personal experience with Vince Lupo. I've lived here 30 years. It's... They're not good ones, and I won't go any further. Anyway, you two were brought here to go forward, not backwards. So I want you to keep that in mind. You don't get divorced and then call your husband up 14 years later and say, hey, you know, let's... I mean, generally, that's not what happens. And so we had Vince Lupo here, and I'm not gonna say he didn't do good things and bad things. I mean, you know, he was not my favorite person. I came to him many times. We had a group here that was directed by a young lady by the name of Mary Ann Robinson, and believe me, if I could have brought her here, I would have. But unfortunately, she moved out of town. But anyway, I... He's not... He's not somebody that I have trust in and that I would always get true answers from. We had the highest tax base when he was here, only because of the fact that all the prices of the homes were very high, so he had a much better budget to work with. I have here in front of me 1, 2, 3, 4, public record, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12 reasons that Mr. Lupo was let go from the city. So he would not be my choice. I mean, if you all want to go backwards, so be it. You know, it's really... You guys have the majority here, but I just wanted to say my piece. I think that, Mr. Lupo, there are better candidates out there, and I think we need to go forward. So that's, you know, these people that have applied, they have the qualifications, and no, not everybody has strengths in every department. That would be Superman or God. So, yes, we have some people that may not have, you know, water experience or CRA experience, et cetera, et cetera. But we do have a good staff here, and these two other gentlemen are bright, and they didn't get where they are today without having something behind them. So in this, you know, I think they'd be a better candidate than for us to go backwards.
Okay. Well, in response, I wish you did have Mary Ann Robinson here, because her husband at her house is the one that tipped off the CRA. Vince picked it up, like I said, I didn't know what it was talking about. Going backwards? You can't go backwards after Tom O'Neill. You just can't. So, I mean, I can't find any reason other than the alacrity of getting this city moving. Make no doubt, there is a motion coming to dissolve the city. It's coming. And you better get something done with... I love these guys. My guy's from Oklahoma, I would take him in a minute. But the fact remains, Mr. Lupo will move it forward fast, he'll come in, him and Jim will be a whirlwind, I'd love to see. And so that is all I have to say. Any other thoughts? Okay, I have a motion for Vince Lupo as city manager, and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay. 3-2 passes. That's it.
You need me?
Motion?
You guys done with the motion? You done with the motion?
Yes.
Okay, just a couple of comments. Housekeeping. I presume you're gonna want an agreement with Mr. Lupo. So we'll contact him first thing in the morning, and a couple of issues. We know what the salary's gonna be, what term... Just throwing this out for discussion here, otherwise, at some point in time, we're gonna go back and forth with him, this speed matters up. Well, we know what the salary is, we advertised the salary. What term are you looking for? One year, two years, three years? You want an order? Let me tell you what Tom O'Neill's contract was. He had a one-year contract. He had an automobile allowance of $200 a month. He had a certain amount of sick days, 10 days, a vacation, 15 days. I mean, I can negotiate these things with him.
He did not have insurance either with us.
He had... Received the same benefits as the other city employees, including dental and everything else, because this is his signed contract.
I'd say no car.
Well, just looking, I will negotiate it with him. Johnson and I will sit down with him and negotiate it, but just kind of get a feel, because I'm sure he'll watch this. You want a one-year contract, two-year contract? What are you looking for?
Can't we just have at-will? We can fire you anytime we want.
You... We could do that, if that's what you want.
I think that would sway...
At-will? Everybody want at-will? Terminated on a majority vote?
I think that would make people more comfortable, if he's willing to do it that way, and I think he's going to... Take us in the direction that people will want to keep him.
Okay, well, I'll make it, you know... Okay. Is that what everybody wants? I mean, I can negotiate whether to come back two or three times, I'm trying to, you know, get to the end. All right, terminate at-will with a simple majority. Are the other issues I can go through, I'm sure I could work them out with him. You can work them out now. You want... Mr. O'Neill got $200 a month for an automobile allowance.
Anybody disagrees with me?
No?
If, unless he pushes it, I...
Okay, I'm just getting a feel, you know?
I want to start at the bottom, if you do that well.
Want to start at the bottom? Okay, I presume the regular benefits and 15 days vacation leave, 10 days sick leave, that...
Excuse me, but he hasn't worked in 14 years. Do you think he needs anything?
It's up to this council.
I mean, really? He doesn't obviously even need a job.
We gotta give him a few days.
What's that?
What do you think, on days?
Oh, Sandy, I'm not gonna stop and grow up.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a feel, so I can do this faster. All right.
And if he disagrees, just go. I'm saving money.
Anything else, Johnson? You can think, we went over these details. Those are the major ones.
Just a cellphone, membership dues, things like that.
Oh, you had a cellphone? Cellphone?
I don't have a phone.
Okay, cellphone's good. It's up to this council, okay. Cellphone?
I don't know why anybody gets a cellphone. I have to have my own.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll watch this, and he'll listen to it, you know, it's up to him what he's gonna insist upon. Anything else, Johnson, you can think of? Those are pretty much the major things. Okay, well, we'll sit...
Can we say we changed our mind on the salary?
You can change your mind, you can, if you want.
Ask him, I would ask him, could you accept 70?
I'll ask him anything.
Just ask him, I mean, you're the attorney.
He's gonna be watching this daily, so... You know what I mean? So it's making it hard to negotiate. I'll ask him. Vince, do you take 70, okay? He's been... I'll ask him. Vince, do you take seventy, okay? He's been asked.
Okay. He can afford a cell phone.
I will negotiate with him.
Any other thoughts?
That's it, those are my only ideas.
I want to say one last thing. Thank you, Jim Matthew. You have done a, you've saved us. I'll thank you.
I look forward to working with Mr. Lupo.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.